Of course, the podium, I'm short, so if you can't see me, I'm sorry. But that's okay, because I'm Denise Walden. I'm not going to make you raise your hand, but I would venture to say that over half of you know who I am, because I was probably your music teacher when you were in elementary school, for some point or another. And for some of you, I may have even had some of your parents, because I have been around a long time. I graduated from Washington High School. I have worked for the Washington Community Schools for over thirty years, thirty-two years total teaching. I started in Vincent's and then came back here. And probably, I want to tell you why I'm running. It's because I have a passion for education. I have a passion for students. I want to see forward progression in what we do here at Washington Community Schools. I think many steps have been taken, but I would like to be a part of that. What can I bring to the table for a school board? I can bring my experience. Most of the time, when a person runs for school board, they've not been in education, but I have. I would appreciate your support and your vote. And some of you, I know, probably can vote on November eighth. Thank you.
I am Barbara, and you can guess my last name. I am a wife of twenty-eight years, a mother of two, and a mamaw. I have desired to work in education since I was five years old, and have been taking mental notes on best teaching practices since that time, which is a little while. My educational background includes an elementary education degree from USI, teaching developmentally disabled adults, coaching junior high volleyball, co-coaching Battle of the Books at Lena Dunn, study hall monitor, assisting in an emotionally handicapped junior high classroom, instructing homebound students, leading a very prayerful PTO at Lena Dunn, three decades of teaching Sunday School, in-home childcare, as well as childcare at the YMCA and WC, instructing a preschool group at the Strengthening Families Program, which was to help families battling addiction, WC preschool teacher, where I was requested as often as Miss Jane, which I felt was a tremendous compliment, teaching preschool at Antioch. And I have also substituted at North Davies, Legodee, Barree, South Knox, North Knox, Vincent's, and every school building in the Washington School Corporation, along with some private tutoring. I believe these experiences would help me bring valuable knowledge to the school board. And I am running in the popular District One. I also combine prayer with my thoughts for the school. And I think that these experiences would help me to bring some ideas and sound decisions to the Washington School Corporation.
Good morning. I'm Ryan Dashner, running for District One. For the past twenty years, I've been involved in education in some form or another, from being an elementary school teacher, to a principal in multiple schools in multiple countries in the world, to a district administrator and an education consultant. I've worked in four sovereign nations. I taught and worked in district administration in Namibia and South Africa, worked on some literacy projects in the patch wall language in Jamaica. I was a school principal on the Navajo Nation, and then most recently on the Zuni Nation in New Mexico. I believe that these experiences would be beneficial to bring to the table. For the past five-plus years, I've been the go-to guy to be called and consult schools that are in academic failure. And while I know that Washington isn't in the dire straits of a lot of the schools that call me and look for my consultation, I still think that I bring a lot to the table when it comes to educational leadership, school law, school budgeting. So that's why I'm running for District One. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Sarah Browning. I was born and raised here in Washington, attended Washington High School. I am the mother of three, including Miss Chloe, here in the senior class. My son was a Marine, or is a Marine, and my youngest is in the junior high. Married my high school sweetheart, have been involved, moved back here after college, went to USI, got a degree, actually started in education, and then ended in business finance. So I feel like my background is a little unique in that I have had some experience teaching, but teaching in a different way. So I don't teach students. I have been here a few times in Dunn Stock Market class for your government and econ classes, but I teach adults over eighteen in my twenty-two years, almost twenty-two years, of working in finance and helping people financially plan. I think that gives me an edge, because I think there's a lot of things that people don't realize about the school board. And I know you have been learning a lot about what the school board does. It's not about one person, it's about a group of people coming together and figuring out how to set goals for the school system, how to collaborate with each other, how to take what you have and build on that and make it even better. So with kids in every school system in Washington, or every school building in Washington at one point or another, I have nieces and nephews that are here in all the school buildings, the grade levels. And then I have a sister-in-law and a brother-in-law who are teachers. So I think having boots on the ground and knowing what's going on in the schools, and attending, whether it's a sporting event, or a band performance, or anything. Our OTC, I was here on Friday for the STEM project. There's so many neat things that are going on at Washington, and I want to help build on those. So that's why I think I would be a good candidate for District One. Thank you.
My name is Tom Bushy, and I'm running for District Two. I grew up in Washington, I graduated from Washington High School in nineteen eighty-three. I was an academic all-state basketball player here. I got a degree in laser electro-optics from Vincent's when I was younger. I went back to farming, and I farmed and raised watermelons and cantaloupes and turkeys most of my life. I went back and got an education degree in elementary. I have a technology degree to teach five through twelve. I currently teach at Wood Memorial High School. And I am running because I think we need to do better for our kids in the proficiency in math and English. Our scores are very low, and I don't think it's the community's fault for that, like I've been told by several school board members and administration. I think we need to address this, and the only things we can change, we can't change our community, we can change our school board and our approach to teaching, and if we need to, administration. So that's why I'm running. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Scott Arthur. I'm your current District Two school board member. Graduated from Washington High School here in nineteen ninety-one. I'm a business owner, third generation on our family farm, Emery Farms. Feel like I know a lot of you guys, I think you've seen me around, pretty involved in the school. Feel like that gives me a knowledge of what's going on here, what's needed. Feel like my business background helps a lot. For those of you that don't know, the school board deals with a lot of the business of the school. We also help with the educational direction, but many of our decisions are business-based as far as that goes. Some of the things that I feel like we've accomplished in the short time that I've been on the board, we've made the move to grade level buildings, we've used our ESER funds that came from the government as a result of the COVID pandemic, to make a lot of improvements around here, also helped with our educational materials for you guys. Looking forward to trying to help keep this school system moving forward, and would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
My name's Garrett Miller, and I was a 2000 graduate from this very school. I was blessed to go through this school, through K through twelve. I went to Veal, all through elementary, and moved up here for my junior high and high school years. My educational background, like I said, I went K through twelve through Washington. And after high school, I went to Vincent's University, and I studied automotive and diesel technology. And I work at McAllister Machinery right now, and I have for twenty years. And I rebuild the big diesel engines that blow a lot of black smoke. And five years ago, I felt a calling on my life. I went back to school, and I got my undergrad in seminary. So I got my undergrad in biblical counseling, and I've been pursuing that on the side of my full-time job. I look back at my life, and I remember where you guys were, and I look back at all the people that invested time in me and energy in me. And I can look at one in the front row right now, Mrs. Hawthorne specifically, I remember she invested in me. And I'm at this stage of my life where I have two kids that are in the school, and my wife works for the school system, and I want to invest back into the kids. Thank you.
All right, thank you, candidates. So just so we're on the same page, there's a lot of nerves up here on stage right now. So it's, these guys are nervous, these guys are, I'm a little nervous. Let's just remember, we're all, you know, we're all here to support the school and the school corporation, so we really want to thank you guys for doing this again. Go ahead and give them one more round of applause. Okay, so just a little review. The students now are going to approach the mic. They will address a single certain candidate. This is not a debate, this is more of a forum, right? So the candidates will have no dialogue with each other, but the students will come up and address a single candidate. They will have no more than three minutes to answer that question. If another candidate wants to speak and have something to say about that question that is not addressed to them, they hold up their card, thank you, and they will have a two-minute response. Any questions from you guys? You guys all feeling good? Okay, here we go.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Ryan Valdez, and this first question is for Mrs. Walden. Good morning, Mrs. Walden. The question states, "School safety is an important topic. Concerns include both violence and drugs. What will you do to ensure the safety of our students and our schools?"
Okay, well, I think, being part of that for the last few years, I think our school has taken, all of our schools have taken this very seriously with the community. My husband, I don't know if any of you know this, but he's the fire chief here, and he's also part of that safety program. They do trainings, the schools do trainings. I think they meet it head-on, but there is always that one case where something could happen. And I think Washington Community Schools right now has done a good job of trying to foresee those things and taking safety measures for all of our students, teachers, and everyone in our community. We even have a school app that helps with that. So I think we could continue on. Of course, there are still shootings, things like that, and I think you can always forward progress with that. I'm not sure if I'm really answering your question, but I do feel the schools have a lot of things in place.
Thank you, Mrs. Walden.
Hello, I'm Lucas Grass. My question is for Mrs. Duncan. My question is, "In Washington Community Schools, over twenty-five percent of students at all levels have some level of disability. We value a candidate that cares about the success of all students. For example, our life skills program is in danger of losing the tennis courts, their acceptable play area, without a viable replacement. How will you make sure that students with all kinds of disadvantages and disabilities become successful and have equal or comparable opportunities?"
Well, this touches a little of my experience. I did work eight years with Four Rivers, and I taught developmentally disabled adults. My emphasis there, when I was working with developmentally disabled adults, was to give them life skills. I worked on self-help skills, and I also had a huge focus on taking those people out in the community, because I wasn't always going to be there for them, but their community was. And I believe that the more that they went out and interacted with people on Main Street, people at the library, people at the store, the more they would have those connections that would support them wholly as a person. One of my ideas that I had at that time was shopping with those people and helping elderly that couldn't get out to the stores. That did not come to fruition, but I felt it was a good idea. Some other activities that we did with the disabled, that were the adults that I worked with, were we took animals to nursing homes and did visits at the nursing home, which enhanced everyone's communication. It was a win-win situation, I thrive on those. I believe bringing those kinds of activities to our life skills class would be very beneficial, make those connections that would support those students throughout their lives, giving them also, making sure to focus on teaching them life skills so they can be ultimately independent. I also managed a group home, I didn't put that in my repertoire of educational background. And that is, and also a resource, I believe, connecting families with education and having the families of those students come and volunteer in the classroom to help that student's education and that family's development would also be important, because sometimes lower achievement is connected with, maybe that family doesn't have a connection with education, or they feel uncomfortable. Getting those families involved with the PTO, involved in feeling comfortable and welcome in the school, that's part of my platform as a candidate. I think that's one of the things that made the schools that I've worked in, Barree, WC, Veal, extremely successful, is they had over and above parent participation in their school system. I just, I believe if we implement those ideas and enhance those opportunities, it will help the students, help our community, and help everyone.
Hi, I'm Liz Perez, and my question is for Mr. Dashner. Mental health doesn't discriminate. Many students feel not only drained, but also insignificant. Due to this, our district has a chronic issue with attendance. What are some ways to improve the atmosphere of the school so that students can improve their mental health and look forward to coming to school?
Some of the ways that we can improve student attendance first, giving students incentives to be at school, but also engaging them in the classroom so that they're excited about what's happening in the classroom. If you're bored with the topics, if you're bored with the way that your teachers are engaging you, then you're going to be less likely to show up into the classroom. If teachers have the resources so that they can properly engage you, you'll also be more likely to end up in the classroom and have better attendance. When it comes to students' mental health, mental health's important. School is a stressful time, especially the age that you guys are, as juniors and seniors, and thinking about leaving school and what's next. Our schools need to be equipped to have opportunities for you to interact with individuals that maybe are in the track that you want to move towards in the future. If you're on the college track, then interacting with university students and going to universities and visiting college campuses and things that I know that you're already doing. But if you're looking at joining the workforce, opportunities as well to, you know, to go out and see what's available and see what's out there. You know, mental health also has a lot to do with what the first question was, with school safety. And if students' mental health needs are taken care of, they're more able to express concerns that they have in their home life and in their family life to peers and to teachers, so that we can keep all students safe as well.
Okay, we have our first card, this is exciting. So, Ms. Browning, if you want to go ahead and go, and then Ms. Duncan.
So I was just going to add, one of the things that I've been involved in, and my family's been involved in, is bringing youth-first master-level social worker in all the high school and the junior high. Mental health doesn't discriminate. I deal with anxiety, and I think it's something that we don't talk about a lot. So I think having those programs, having someone available that's free to you all the time, some of you may know that, some of you may not know that. But I think having someone in the school that you have access to at all times, because sometimes it's not school, sometimes it's not, sometimes it's just, that's how you're built. Sometimes it is something going on at home, and sometimes you break up with a boyfriend or a girlfriend, or whatever is happening in your life. It may not be significant to someone else, but it may have a really significant effect on you. And having someone that's not maybe your parent or a friend that you don't feel comfortable talking to about those things, having youth-first social worker here in the school is so important. Really passionate about that, and we continue to help fund that and do things to make sure that they stay in the school systems, because I just think that's invaluable. So hopefully, if you need that, you have that resource available to you, free of charge, because people in the community and the school system, the school board, have made that a priority to make sure they're available to you. So, just off the top.
On this note, I'm going to tell you a little story, make it quick, but also, I do have experience working, I assisted for a year in an emotionally handicapped junior high classroom, so I would bring that experience to the school board. I also taught a preschool group at the Strengthening Families, which I mentioned earlier, which was families getting help battling addiction. So I have worked with families and children in that area and realm. In one particular instance, this is just an example of how I battled things like that, there was a little boy that came to my Barree classroom, I was doing a maternity leave, and his dad was in jail, he was a first grader. He came in that classroom with his head down, no other student came to meet the teacher that way, they were all excited. His aunt came up to me, and I said, "Oh, we're going to," she said, "we're going to communicate about what's going on with him." And he just looked down even more, and I said, "Yes, we are." I said, "I'm going to tell you something good this child does every day." And he looked up, and he didn't quite smile yet, and I thought, "Okay, I'm going to have to communicate something he does good every day." And so every day I did that maternity leave, I wrote a note and gave him to put in his backpack about something he had done in class that day that made me proud of him. But I couldn't just do that for him and not do it for the rest of class. So at recess time, when I was on duty, I was writing sticky notes for everybody in class. And it really impacted that young man. Towards the end of that maternity leave, I still remember this moment, and it warmed my heart, we were sitting at the carpet, I was reading Junie B. Jones, and every day that little boy's smile had grown a little bigger and a little brighter to match the rest of the students. And I read the line, "Class is a wonderful place to be." His smile was about this wide, and he said, "Yes, it is." Those kinds of things, I think, will help student attendance and student mental health.
Okay, thank you. Actually, we have a mental health convocation this afternoon, so, way to go. Our fourth candidate didn't make it this morning, so we're going to save her question until the end, and if we have time for a free-for-all round. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and skip to the next question.
Good morning, my name is Michaela Lemon, and my question is from Mrs. Browning. Washington Community Schools Corporation rate is a C. Our school corporation falls below the state average in every calorie except tenth-grade rating. What's your concerns do you have about our rating, and what steps would you take to risk on the rest of the school board improving our school corporation? Can you bring that down so I can hear you? I'm sorry. Okay, Washington Community Schools are currently a rate school. Our school corporation falls below the state average in every calorie except tenth-grade rating. What conditions do you have about our school rating, and what steps would you take with the rest of our school board improving our school corporation?
So I think that's a difficult question. Actually, I'm pretty passionate about it, because I think a lot of schools, one, I'm not a huge fan of grading schools. There has to be a way to do that, I understand, but I think we don't look at it apples to apples. And I think our school corporation is compared to, let's say, a neighboring school. And we have a lot of students that are English as a second language, or their parents are English as a second language. We have a wonderful life skills class, which we just talked about, and all of those students get tested the exact same way. I don't think it's fair. I think there's a lot of things, and that's not something I can necessarily help with our school board, I don't think, but it is something that I think's worth fighting for at the state level. And I would support that, because I think, if you're not comparing apples to apples, it's not fair to grade on that same scale. We don't do that with children, we don't do that with adults in general, it just seems to happen in the school system. So I think that's just something that needs to be kind of a battle that's fought in a different realm, but I think that for us, comparing, and it's not that we don't need to improve upon those things, I definitely think that those are things that we need to focus on, and really get involved with students individually, because everyone's a little different, and try to teach to those people, but that's part of teaching. Everyone has a different personality, everyone learns in a different way, it's no different with the adults that I learn with, some like me to draw pictures, and some want me to talk about things. It's the same thing when you teach, students. So I think just focusing on those things are important, but I also think that a lot of that goes back to the state level, and I think comparing our school to a school that maybe doesn't have a life skills group, or doesn't have a lot of diversity in their school, I think it's really difficult to say, "We're graded this way and they're graded that way." So that's what I would look at, is at the state level, more than at our local school board.
Mr. Dashner has two minutes.
Your school board and your superintendent and your principals have a lot of, have the ability to make up a lot of the difference in what happens in the classroom. And the way that we can do this as a school board is making sure that funding is appropriate for each individual school, so that individual principals can look in every single classroom and have the autonomy to say, "This classroom needs this to engage students more. This classroom needs this to engage students more. This teacher needs this resource." Every classroom is not the same, and every school is not the same. In educational leadership, there's a term that we use, there's no such thing as average. And if we were looking at, you know, if we're looking at fighter pilots in the Air Force, and how they, and, you know, what they need in order to be successful in their fighter jet, it's completely different. They might have different length of arms, and different length of legs, and a taller torso, and so we have cockpits that adjust. And the same thing goes for the classroom. Each individual student is on a jagged learning curve. They might be strong in one area and weak in one area, strong in one area, weak in one area, and it kind of goes back and forth. So when our textbooks are wrote to the average students, our teachers need the autonomy to say, "I know that this student needs a little bit more of this, and this student needs a little bit more of this." So as a school board member, we can make sure that the funding is appropriate, so that principals have that autonomy to make those decisions in the classroom as they see fit.
Good morning. My name is Hunter Strange. Mr. Bushy, being a member of the school board is a big responsibility, as your decisions impact a large group of people. What experiences or skills do you have that make you a good fit for our school board?
I've lived here all my life, I went to school here. I've ran a business, a farm. I have a license in teaching, I have a license in technology, I know that's a big thing nowadays. And I actually teach right now, I could teach PLTW down at Wood Memorial. I've had a lot of experience with different kinds of kids. I've coached basketball here, a lot of AAU for different people throughout the years. So I feel like I've had a pretty good wide range of experiences to get me prepared for this job. And I do appreciate, but I do, can I add on to something somebody added earlier? As far as keeping kids involved in school, I would like to see, I think a big thing in that is keeping kids on task and keeping them up to grade level. If other kids fall behind, the more they're going to be depressed, the more they're not going to want to go to school. They need to stay on grade level. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? My name is Alex Chesna and my question will be for Mr. Scott. So, as a member of the band, baseball and robotics team, I visited a number of areas of schools and all of which had facilities of a higher standard than here at Washington. At a hearing on October 20th, 2022, the current school board announced that the intent to issue bonds up to a total of 2.23 million to pay for renovation and improvements to school facilities, including site and athletic improvements, maintain, maintenance and improvements, and the purchase of technologies and equipment. The stated needed for this additional needed money was inadequacy of present buildings to brighten necessary school facilities in the school corporation. My class has three parts that we would like to address as you answer our question. One, were you aware and do you approve of this planned bond issuance? Two, do you know which specific projects have been earmarked in renovation upgrades? Please give an example if so. Number three, what improvements would you like to see our school buildings or athletic, athletic facilities in addition to or in place of those proposed projects?
Thank you, Alex. Yeah, I do know a lot about that. I actually voted for that bond issuance. The current scope of the project is Hatchet Hollow. And we looked at that because that is where we see the most need in our school corporation at this time for a bond of this size. We're gonna be able to turn that into a multi-use facility. There will be, football will be able to use it, band will be able to use it. We hope to have a track involved as well, there will be soccer lines on the field. So this will be something that can be used year-round. It will also be something that our physical education classes can use, our life skills classes can use, because we will no longer have the concern of wear and tear on that field that we've always had to worry about. Your second or third question regarding what else I see, we are overcrowded. All our elementary schools are struggling for room, our high school struggles for room, I think Alex knows, our robotics class struggles to find places to practice, to build. Our band struggles to have gym space. Our athletes struggle, struggle to have gym space. We need a better weight facility. We have several needs. We need to get rid of the portable buildings, those of you that went to North or Veal know what those are. Those need to go away. By going to grade-level buildings, we've helped with that issue. Now North is just using those portable buildings for band. Still a need, still something that has to be fixed. Right now, we're having band class at North in the cafeteria. So that, that room has to be cleared. We have band, then we have to set it back up for lunch. So we have a lot of building needs. This bond was done with the theory in mind that this will solve one issue, but we have many more. We will have some bonds coming off in the future that will be paid for, that will open us up to use further bonding to help make improvements and we hope at some point to have another referendum and see if we can get that moving forward again. So I hope that answers all your questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
As far as the need for extra room in our schools, our, our elementary, we have moved two classes from Veal. We did away with portables and I know people wanted, some people wanna get rid of those. Said that they're up, they're in schools all throughout the country. But we moved two classes from Veal, we expanded our preschool. And we've added band and other stuff to our schools. So a lot of our problems are self-inflicted in the elementary schools. And I think we can, I really, I think they're trying to make an issue so they can get their new building. And to get the new building, you guys are the ones that are gonna pay for it. You stay in Winston, Indiana, you'll be the ones paying for that building. I don't think buildings make education. I think teachers do. Thank you.
My name, my name is Keegan MacDannold and I have a question for Garrett Miller. Good morning, how are you? We know that the school board is meant to reflect the community's opinions while dealing with corporation issues. What is an example of a problem and how would you address it while accommodating the needs of all stakeholders?
Can you, can you repeat that?
Yep. We know that the school board is meant to reflect the community's opinions while dealing with corporation issues. What is an example of a problem and how would you address it while accommodating the needs of all stakeholders?
I think, I think part of the problem is communication and expectations. Everywhere in life, you see breakdowns of communication. In, in today's world, we have technology where we can talk to someone clean on the other side of the world or clean in outer space, but yet we break down just simply talking to the person that we work next to every day. I think mining out communication, and I think that approaching that from a level-headed and common sense mindset is key. So much can be resolved by miscommunications or so many things that get out of hand because it's taken out of context from what someone has said or what someone meant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, you guys. So we have one final question, we're gonna go ahead and ask, and I guess we'll maybe just put like a minute on it. And if you wanna speak to it, just raise your hand and, and we'll just, we'll figure it out, okay?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rayleigh McAtee. School boards assist with transportation throughout the corporation. A reoccurring problem is that students of all ages experience troubles with transportation, examples including being left on the bus, not being picked up in the first place, or having to walk a quarter mile to get to the bus stop. What policies would you implement to ensure all of our students are making it to and back from their homes?
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mr. Brown.
So I am aware of the issue. And one thing that I think we've seen this year, part of the move to grade-level buildings was a change to our transportation. One thing that was a major concern was we had all of the elementary buildings feeding up here to the high school. And you guys probably experienced this, then you had to get off a bus and go find another bus that was gonna take you home. That has been eliminated. I don't know if you guys are aware of it because you're, you're of an age that you wouldn't know that. That's been eliminated with our new transportation model. So I, I think we're working. It's something that's in progress at all times. We have a good transportation director, Kevin, that, that keeps an eye on this and David Alford. So I appreciate the concerns because they are valid. As far as having to walk to the bus, you know, we try to avoid that, but, but you also have a time constraint. We don't wanna start picking kids up at six o'clock in the morning. So we're working at it. Thank you.
We have this new, the new grade schools and it probably has helped with the busing, but our old busing system was really not very good. We didn't need to have all the kids dumping off at, at the high school. If they'd have went to the schools that they were supposed to go to, they wouldn't have had to do that. If they would have, they wanted to go to a different school and they should have had to provide their own transportation, so. And not only is this an issue with busing, but I think we've lost probably an hour of educational time because we have to drive kids around every school in the morning and evening and we're on the same times, so we had to give up that time somewhere. Thank you.
As I stated earlier, I've worked in, in school districts as small as 300 students and, and, and districts as large as 11,000 students. In all school districts, busing is tough. And, and today, a big part of busing being tough is providing buses, is finding bus drivers. I think that, you know, reaching out to our community and finding, and finding those drivers that are willing to do that, you know, we're competing with truck driving organizations that, you know, that CDL can be big money to be driving across country instead of driving a couple times a day. Another way to address busing issues is there's some really great GPS technology now that can really, really hone in on what your, what your needs are of your community and, and how each individual bus can be used more efficiently and more effectively in order to, to get our students to their locations faster. You know, it's, it's not ideal, but, but, you know, Washington schools has some rural students and it's not ideal for them to be riding the bus for more than 30 minutes. But you're always gonna, we, in a district this size, we're gonna have some students that are doing that. But I think our goal is to minimize that and, and I, and I know that the school board is, is, is working on that as well currently.
All right, thanks, you guys. So now we'll go back, like the introductions, we're gonna have closing statements, so we'll go in the same order and we'll start with Ms. Walden. Two minutes.
I won't talk more than two minutes. Probably not that long. Anyway, I hope you've enjoyed this. There are a lot of great candidates up there, but I want you to know why you should vote for me. Because I could share my time and experience in the classroom and I can bring that to the board. I believe in the quality of education for all students. I think there should be more transparency between the school board and the community. And I have ideas on how to do that. Develop stronger ties between the community and the school board. And I also think we have done great things and I think we should have a forward progression on helping all of our students, community, schools, teachers to be the best that they can be. Thank you.
First, I want to concede that this weekend I misspoke. I expressed a concern for the younger generation and their political awareness and the class of 2023 at Washington has proven me wrong. I hope you enjoyed guessing my name. That's a little way I would introduce myself when I would go substitute at a new school so that I would have constructive, creative, collaborative talk before the school day began and we would set a tone for learning. I also wanna turn that around. The class made a poster for me and I wanna show you that great minds think alike. My platform includes many ideas for the school. One is the wise expenditure of taxpayers' money and listening to the community's viewpoints, especially when that's expressed in voting. I'm a huge fan of whole-classroom bilingual education. I actually ran for school board two years ago and that was part of my platform then. I have heard that that is being looked into, being implemented in Washington School Corporation next year, which makes me very glad. Other ideas I have are increased parental involvement in the schools. I have invested my life in that. I spent 10 years working intensely with the Lena Dunn PTO. And if you check the I-Step scores of the time that the PTO that I was hugely involved with was working at Lena Dunn, those scores went consecutively upward from 2000 to about 2010. So we know that parent involvement being in the schools actually works to improve student achievement and I'm a huge fan of that. I also stand behind work ethic programs, support for extracurricular activities, teacher collaboration, with room for autonomy in the classroom. So if you have a class that has a special interest or a student that has a special interest, maybe your class isn't exactly in line with that other classroom teacher because Johnny really likes dinosaurs and his friends are excited about that and we're gonna include that. Longer lunches and more, and more recesses to increase effective learning with re-energized bodies. I've seen this be effective at school.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan.
Thanks for allowing us the opportunity to be here, guys. Bottom line, at the end of the day, I think the reason that we're all here is because of you. You guys are the, you guys are the product that's produced in these schools and, and we wanna make sure that the best product is, is being produced. We wanna make sure that at, at the end of the school year, at the end of your senior year, that you have the choices in front of you that you want. You have the opportunities in front of you that you want. And I want that for your younger siblings and the students that are coming up behind you as well. I have, I have a broad range of experiences in education in, in multiple countries and in, in multiple states in the United States. I've had multiple experiences going to our legislative sessions and going to committee meetings when laws are being made on education and, and being a voice to, to help impact that. And I'd appreciate your vote next month.
I do appreciate you allowing us to be here. I think it's important for you guys to learn about the school board and what the school board does and, and why it's important to you. I think most people in a community, they understand there is a school board, they understand that who's on it maybe and that they vote for it every time, but they don't really look into it. So I'm excited for all of you to understand that school board is not about just being in charge. It is, but it's not. You have to be able to work with others and it's important to be strong in your leadership skills, it's important to be a good communicator, it's important to be a good collaborator with others, which is why the school board does the hiring. So it's important that the school board understands and hires really good quality people and in particular a superintendent and your other administration because they're the ones that implement what happens in the schools. So school board's job is to set goals, set a budget, which I think with a finance, finance background, that's really important, that makes me a good candidate for stepping into the school board and helping with the financial part of it because it's a lot of money that runs through the school board and the school system. And just like having a, a county council, the school board and the county council in your county control the most money of any other entity. It is important to have people that understand finance when it comes to being on the board, but it's also important to have people that can work well with others. And I think I bring that to the table. So I would appreciate your vote. Sarah Browning for District One, thank you.
Like I said before, whatever we do now, you are gonna be paying for on the schools. The teachers we hire now will be teaching your kids. I believe we should hire licensed, experienced, if they have master's degrees, that's all the better. I don't think we should be hiring unlicensed people and putting them on emergency permits on a regular basis. And that's something that we're doing at this school a lot. I don't know if you know it, my brother was the representative for my district too that I farmed with, he passed away a couple years ago, so I talked to him a lot about the school board. I know a lot about it. And I would appreciate your vote on November 8th. Thank you.
All right, so again, I just wanna say I appreciate y'all letting us come in here. Hundred percent not comfortable with being up here and talking to people, so I think it maybe showed a little bit, but, you know, the school board is, is an important thing to keep our school system moving forward. I, I don't agree that we shouldn't try to expand our programs and, and do things that force us to look at needing more room to make that happen. I am also a business owner and a taxpayer and I'm not for putting a big bill out there for you kids to have to pay for the next 20, 30, 50 years. So I feel like I'm a good candidate to keep in mind the needs of the school system and also to judiciously spend that money or, or make those commitments for you. So I appreciate, again, all you, all you guys do. You make our school system what it is and I'd appreciate your vote. Thank you.
The first time I was up here, I forgot to say that I'm gonna be your representative for District Four, I'm running unopposed. And guys, I'll just tell you, I'm excited. I'm excited to see what's in front of me. I, I know the candidates here are great people and I'm just honored to be part of it. I, I feel like I can bring a lot of common sense to questions and problems that arise. I, I feel like I can bring a lot of common sense to questions and problems that arise. I, I, I think a lot of times we, we complicate situations that we may not necessarily need to complicate. I'm excited to get out there and just, um, see what happens. I know there's gonna be a great team there and work together, communication. Thank you, guys.
All right, we're early. Great job, you guys. Thanks. I think y'all did a great job. So just, um, out of curiosity, raise your hand if you're old enough to vote here in a couple of weeks. So, there you go. Yeah. Okay, so we're all registered and ready to do that, right? Okay, yeah, just good. Okay, so are we gonna dismiss back to first period? Yes? Okay. All right. Hey, let's give our candidates one more round of applause. One second.